The shows.
Okay.
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 Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Barton, for starting the recording. The time is now five, sorry, six oh seven P M. Um, I would like to call to order the March third, twenty twenty five Board Audit Committee meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Dr. Tiffany Anderful, Chair of this committee and the District One Board Member. The primary purpose of Prince George's County Board of Education Audit Committee is to provide oversight of the financial reporting process, the audit process, the PG CPS system of internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. Welcome to our committee members and any other Board of Education members. Also, I would like to welcome any other special guests, which today it seems like we may have one as a panelist, but any others joining us, welcome. We will now have introductions starting in this order. Board members, administrative staff, board office staff, and all other guests. Board Member Brown.
Hello. Thank you, District Five Board Member, excited to be here, and thank you so much, Ms. Simple, for all the work that you do.
Hi, Pamela Boozer Struther, District Three Board of Education Member and Vice Chair of the Audit Committee.
Mia Barton, Board Office Staff Member.
Okay, I am Janice Walters Semple, the Acting Internal Audit Director. Pleased to be here.
Thank you all so much for joining this evening. Ms. Barton, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Anderful.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Present.
Mrs. Brown.
Present.
Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jongo. We have three present.
Thank you, Quormis present. We will now proceed to our semi-annual internal audit report as there are no public comments registered. I'd like to recognize Ms. Janice Walters Semple, the Acting Internal Audit Director for the Semi-Annual Internal Audit Report for School Year Twenty-Five Presentation.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair Anderful. I am, again, Janice Walters Semple, I'm the Acting Internal Audit Director, and I'm here to present to you a semi-annual report of the internal audit activities starting July one through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four.
Ms. Walters Semple, I'm sorry, but I apologize for, um, cutting you off, and you may, um, do this, but would you mind, just for the public, just providing a little bit of additional context? Um, I know you're going to provide a little bit of information here about your responsibility, but for those who may not be aware of, um, you know, the purpose of this report, amongst other reports that you may be over as well, can you probably provide a little bit of context for those who may be unaware?
Okay, um, I'll be glad to share. So, this department, um, I guess I'll capture all of that in this slide. Internal audit is, um, this department was created by the Board um, over twenty-five years ago, and the, um, primary responsibility of the Internal Audit Department is to, I think, not, not be so much of an oversight, but to be, um, the eyes and ears of the Board of Education in that we review the activities, the financial activities, and operational activities of the departments within Prince George's County Public Schools and the schools themselves. And based on our review, which is more or less risk-driven, we review these activities and report back to the Board, sharing the results of our review. And, um, in the process, management is responsible, given the prescribed timeline, to respond to the findings that we've, we may identify, and, um, the recommendations that we have made to them. And we are also responsible to share that information with the Board. So, as an Internal Audit Department, our Board Policy eighty-three seventy-three, Internal Board Operations, Office of Internal Audit, uh, which was adopted in June of two thousand and fifteen, um, provides us with a mandate in terms of what we are allowed to do, in terms of our access to documentation and, um, personnel within the realms of our audit, and how, you know, the autonomy of this department is established there. Included in that, um, body of information that guides our operation is a reporting responsibility. And this department is required to provide quarterly reports to the Board. We're also required to provide monthly reports. Um, for this year, we have not provided the first quarter report, and that is why we have a semi-annual report that we're going to share. And this is to share with the Audit Committee, which is that subcommittee of the Board of Education that has been established at the beginning of this year to more or less oversee the internal audit or to provide guidance, and where we are required to report directly back to the Audit Committee. So, um, I guess that's our responsibility in, if I should try to paint it with a broad brush. Okay, um, so would you kindly advise a slide, advance a slide for me?
Yes, I'm trying. I'm trying.
That's okay.
Now I went back too far. Oh, there it goes.
There, there we go, just hit enter me. All right, or, as we go forward, um, into the Internal Audit Office Responsibility. So, as our name implies, we are responsible for audits, for planning, um, executing, and reporting the results of our audits. And like I said before, we perform school activity fund audits, and that's where we review the financial activity of the schools, um, schools rece- receive various funds, um, from students, um, for various activities, and we review to ensure that those funds that are received and funds that are dispersed as it relates to school activities that they are administered in accordance with the accounting procedures manual. And that's the quote-unquote Bible, or the guidelines that, um, dictate how school funds should be used. Um, schools also receive, um, SBB, School-Based Budgeting Funds, and those are funds that are alo- allocated by the, um, Budget Office. We do not review those funds, we just review the funds that are flowing in and out based on receipts from, um, students. Uh, we also perform operational audits, and this is where we perform audits of processes within, um, various departments. Included in operational audits are also information technology audits. And more recently, we have started conducting audits, um, that we are calling continuous audits, and these we're referring to um, because they are more real-time in terms of we're providing management with, you know, constant feedback. Usually, an audit is a reflection of something that happened in a past period, but with our continuous audit, we're providing more real-time, um, responses and recommendations to management for process improvements, and these have been welcomed by management. And, um, we're hoping that we can add some more value here. It's not as extensive as an operational audit, but it's providing the information as to here is where we are finding deficiencies, here is where you can make the process stronger in terms of the internal controls, so that we can, um, avoid, you know, when, when the future audit comes, the real audit, then we can reduce the issues or the exceptions that would be identified. We also perform investigations, and this is a significant, um, part of what we do as internal audits. We have an investigative auditor who is responsible for managing our hotline, and the hotline is Navex, um, and Navex captures all of our activities as they relate to, um, complaints that we receive anonymously or otherwise. And, um, we may also, we, it's, it's our big repository, and, um, we may receive complaints outside of our hotline system. We still enter them in there because we want to centralize all the complaints that we receive and process. So that's one of the, for investigations, that's where the bulk, well, not the bulk, but maybe about a third of our activities are tied up in investigation. And then we may have special requests, either for investigations or for other audits. And, um, we also incorporate those into our audit plan and execute the audits or the investigation as we see necessary. The next, um, we have our, our other responsibilities. In addition to what we do, we have other functions. And as a department, we have, uh, one position for a business analyst, and that business analyst assists with supporting Board members by processing their expenditures, reviewing, and, um, processing expenditures. Um, we also, we are also responsible for coordinating activities surrounding our external audits. And that's where we coordinate and communicate back to the Board the status of our operational, our, um, external audits, sorry, and that's with our external audit firm. And that's for our annual comprehensive financial report and our single audit reports. Then we are also involved in communicating with the persons responsible for and the auditors for external audits. So there are MSDE audits for student records that we assist with, um, coordinating, and the Office of Legislative Auditors. So those are two of the main ones that we work along with, and again, share information with the Board so that they can see, um, have an idea as to what is going on. And then the big part is the administering of the, um, administration of the hotline.
I'm hitting enter and nothing's happening.
Oh. Great. Okay, for, for the period, our accomplishments for the period, I guess the period is cut off. Um, we have completed thirty-two audits to date, and, uh, to date being December thirty-one. We have since completed a few others. The thirty-two as of twelve thirty-one, um, include twenty-one school activity fund audits, four operational audits, and seven investigations. And this will touch on in a little more, um, detail, not too detailed, but we'll have a summary of these as we advance our slides. For the twenty-five, um, fiscal year audit plan, we are approximately twenty percent complete. And, um, this is so because, um, even though we are halfway through the year, we had some audits that were, um, some operational audits that were not necessarily, um, completely have been started, but for some reason, we could not get through them. They have been, um, impacted by vacancies in our department. Um, we have also experienced the impact of new auditors. We had two new auditors at the beginning of the fiscal year, and they were experiencing a learning curve. And then we also had the Thanksgiving and Christmas breaks, and those have impacted, um, our ability to get our, get further along in our, um, audit plan. Um, staffing. Our department, as was reported, our department um, has the capacity for, um, or has, is designed for twelve FTEs. At this point, we have three vacancies. And, um, like I previously stated, that has impacted our work, um, our work performance. And then the hotline administration, we have received, um, processed approximately two hundred and sixty-eight hotline complaints uh, for the first half of the fiscal year. Okay. The operational audits that were completed, I'm going to share a little bit more. Here, I'm going to let you know the process that we've audited, um, the issue date, the findings, and when the action plans were due. But before I go to that, I want to say that all of the action plans were received. So I will not continue, um, stating the action plan date because, um, we've, we've received all of them, and the management's responses were accepted. The first audit was an audit of the fuel management system that is called EJ Ward, and this audit report was issued on July five, twenty twenty-four. And there were two findings that we identified during that process. The first being that, um, Department of Transportation and Central Garage does not have a systemic monitoring control in place that would reduce theft of fuel. And the second is that the, a report, a usage, fuel usage report that would assist the management in carefully monitoring any anomalies was not, um, it's available in the system, but it has not been utilized by management. So, um, we made the recommendation that management should use this report in order to assist them in improving the quality of the process as it relates to the fuel management. Then we did an, a regular operational audit, and this was of the H R certification process. And in, during this audit, we did experience a scope limitation, and that's what our first finding is alluding to, where we were not able to get access to the system. Um, Teach and Teachers where the certificates for, um, teachers are housed, our PGCEA employees, um, their certificates are housed in the Teach. And, um, E I S is also another system that we had that we transitioned from before we used Teach, and we were not able to get access. So as a result, there were certain, um, assertions that we could not opine on. Administration of Personnel Records was also, um, another issues where, issue, sorry, where we were not able to access the records in order to, um, in order to be able to determine whether the certification process operated as intended. And there were also, um, personnel action sheets where, um, within employees' personnel file that were unavailable. The next finding, um, the next audit was grade change validity. Grade change validity audit is an audit that is required by the State of Maryland. It's an annual audit. Um, I think this is the third, this was the second or third year that we were required to do this audit. And, um, it's where it's a state requirement that this audit is conducted. So at the beginning of each school year, we're, we tried to gather the information for the past year and, um, determine whether we review this, when we review the system to see whether the changes, grade changes, were performed as, um, they're required to be performed. And, um, we used SchoolMax, but SchoolMax has since, or I T has since transitioned to Synergy. So the new system that we will be looking at during this year, or at the end of this year, early next fiscal year, would be Synergy. And here we found we had six exceptions where there were insufficient documentation of grade changes, uh, where grade cha- changes were not updated in SchoolMax, where on, there were unrecorded grade manager and transcript manager actions in SchoolMax, and there were delinquent processing of grade change requests, inadequate staff training for grade changes and appeal. And, um, the last exception here was the administration of grade change reconciliation. We found that the reconciliation, as required by the, uh, um, administrative procedure, which is founded in the State of Maryland Regulation, was not performed. And then the last operational audit that we completed during the first, um, half of the fiscal year was for a business continuity plan follow-up. And this was also an I T, um, audit. And here, we found there was one issue, and this issue was that a formal risk assessment as required by proper business practice was not performed following a cyber attack that we experienced. Um, well, we're saying it was not performed in that it was not documented. It was required to be documented in the business continuity plan that was prepared, and we did not see it documented within the plan. And then we, it resulted in the finding. Management did not agree with this. They, um, contended that they have performed, um, a risk assessment. Um, however, that risk assessment was not included in the audit plan, and I guess that, that was the finding that we had there. So, um, they stated that there has been a risk assessment performed. However, there was no evidence that that, um, was performed because for the auditors, we need to see it for it to exist. Next. Okay, we had, as stated before, seven investigations. So the first one was an investigation into misuse of sick leave um, by an employee at the Heisman Elementary School. This allegation was substantiated, and, um, it was referred to E L R O, Employee and Labor Relations Office, for review and to determine any appropriate action. So for our investigations, especially if it has something to do with, um, some kind of misconduct on behalf of an, um, or by an employee, internal audit does not recommend what should be done direct, because that is the function of the Employee and Relations, uh, Labor and Relations Office. We often would make a recommendation for Employee and Labor Relations to take the appropriate action. The next, um, investigation was for C M I T Academy North High School, and this is a public charter school. And there was an allegation that emolument payments were made for a newspaper club, and policies and procedures regarding the emolument process was not followed. Um, based on the investigation that was conducted by this office, we did not, um, substantiate that allegation. So we found that the allegation was unsubstantiated. And when there is, the allegation is unsubstantiated, we do not make, uh, um, and we draw a conclusion that there is nothing further, and management is not required to respond in this case. Um, the next was Dr. Henry Wise Junior High School, where the allegation was, um, a teacher was involved in fraudulent employment email scheme. And, um, based on the investigation, again, in this situation, we could not substantiate this claim. The fourth instance was non-traditional North Campus, where there was an allegation that, uh, well, there were two allegations. One, that employee, the employee received pay for seven days with a total of seven hours of overtime. And the second allegation was that employee falsified a principal's signature to receive overtime pay. So in this case, we could not substantiate that the employee received, um, seven days pay with a total of, um, eleven hours, or eleven hours within seven days. We could not substantiate that aspect of it. However, we were able to substantiate that the employee did falsify the principal's, um, signature to receive overtime pay. And I remember this situation where the employee just, you know, made a copy of the timesheet with the principal's signature and used a whiteout and, you know, made the updates to this, um, form because the employee did not want to go and, quote-unquote, interrupt the principal in order to have the principal always sign. I think that in this case, the employee was not aware of the process. But since it was falsification of signature, which is forgery and fraudulent, we did recommend this, um, situation for appropriate action by E L R O. And, um, we also required or recommended that, um, there should be some enhancement to the time approval process. Next. Okay, Perrywood. Perrywood Elementary School, um, undocumented leave case. The, there were two allegations here. One, the first one, undocumented leave for teacher was substantiated. The second, undocumented leave not recorded by secretary or timekeeper was partially substantiated. And based on the key determinations and the conclusions of this investigation, it was determined that three sick leave days were not documented and/or recorded by the school secretary. Then, the next, um, investigation was for security equipment purchase. And this was where, um, we had a situation where security cameras were shipped to us by the vendor based on a price quote that was signed by an employee for this significant amount, the, um, of, of cash. Um, the security cameras, after the issue was noted, and it was noted that this process did not go through procurement as required. Uh, um, there has been several, you know, actions taken, and, uh, the security cameras were since shipped back to the vendor without any consequence to Prince George's County Public Schools. And the employee was, um, recommended for appropriate action by E L R O. And the employee was um recommended for appropriate action by ELRO. And the final case is for Charles Flowers High School EVP. This was the last um hotline complaint that was processed. The allegation was that an anonymous caller alleged that staff member A. Sent out an email to students who were not able to graduate. The caller further noted that students have not taken part A. Before taking part B of some courses. Um based on the um review that we did and the investigation with the. Um ID's office, the principal's office and all parties involved. We could not substantiate this claim and no recommendation was made as a result. Next, okay, for our school activity funds audit is completed. Those were twenty-one audits, some had no findings. Some had very little findings and some had a few more findings. And this we attempted to depict graphically. So would you advance please Mia? Okay, so we can see most of the schools. Like a significant portion or seven, seven out of the twenty-one. So that's a third of the schools had five or more findings. Four schools had no findings. Um. One school, four schools also had one to two findings. And six schools had three to four findings. I think included in the three. I- in the five to seven findings was one school that subsequently closed. So um we did not need to have any of the um a response from that school. But all the other schools have responded appropriately. Then for our hotlines, we had all of the um hotline complaints that were. Submitted for the period, the two hundred sixty-eight. And those we have also attempted to depict graphically. So we have a bar chart for that on the next slide. Okay, so. We have here where the most significant ones um in terms of my primary issue. Safety issues and sanitation, we had twenty-nine complaints for the period. Bullying and harassment, we had twenty-eight complaints. School and the office management, there were twenty-six complaints. Employee relations, twenty-four. Policy issues, we had twenty-five. And parent and the community relations, we had nineteen. So I think those were the ones that stood out the most. And um when we projected them using the graph. I think there, it shows which categories were most significant in terms of um the issues for the period. Next. Okay, so like I said, we started quite a few of these audits um. Prior to the third quarter. And um we were not able to come, well, prior to the second quarter, we were not able to complete all of them. Or some of them in the second quarter. So far, we have completed two of these audits. Um the second factor IT audit and the telework policy. So these were subsequently completed. The itinerant teacher audit is almost completed. We had the exit conference and we're trying to resolve some discrepancies. Based on what we have identified and subsequent information that was provided by management for the itinerant teacher. Otherwise, we have the special education audit that is in the fieldwork stage. We have treasury operations, that's another follow-up audit that, and these are operational audits. That are in the um that is, sorry, in the pre-planning phase. We have zone our systems, that is in the final phase of fieldwork. Um. And then we have the continuous audits where we are currently reviewing. Um and and analyzing and assessing conflict of interest statements. And leave request and approval. Then for our other general operational audits. We are yet to begin our capital improvement program. And our COVID nineteen grants and other unaudited grant um grant funds. So these two are, have not begun, but we are hoping we may not get to complete them in this quarter. But we're hoping that we can significantly complete those. Otherwise, the rest of, the rest of the audits, we do anticipate completing them in the third quarter. And that has been our um the activities for our, the first half of our fiscal year. At this point, I pause to say thank you for your attention and welcome your comments at the stand. Thank you Mia.
Thank you so much, Ms. Walter Simple. And and to echo what was shared at the top of the meeting, thank you so much for all of your work. Uh I think this certainly shows um that you and your team have been extremely busy. Um and we appreciate um all the work that you've done for, for our school system. Um at this point, I would love to now open the floor for any discussion. Board Member Brown?
Yeah, I just had um a quick question. Um regarding the integrity and compliance. I know that's not your office. Have you all spoken to them as far as what they'll be doing as, as far as even assisting you all? Uh because this is a legislative position that they do hold. So I am, am asking from the, from the position of. Is there a way they could take some of that so you guys won't be as overwhelmed? And I know that there's a staffing shortage, but what does that partnership essentially look like? Thank you.
As far as I know. We do not have a partnership with that office. Their role is independent of ours. So we do not work. We are, our, we are more parallel than we're adjacent in terms of what we do.
Thank you.
Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thank you so much. I just um wanted to thank Ms. Walter Simple. Um you know, you've been doing a lot in your acting role and bridging. Bridging us to our new internal audit director who will begin soon. And, and I know will certainly be significant in the um. Getting through this period where it feels like there, there's more work than the um FTEs. So um just definitely wanna thank you for, for all that you've done to keep us steady. I did just wanna note for the, those, the folks watching the meeting or the. Video that the entire board does see all of this data in depth.
I think Board Member Boozer Strutter may be frozen. Is she frozen for anyone else?
Are you due to public? Board Member Boozer. I just wanted to add just a little more context to that.
Board Member.
In my back.
You are now, so we missed um most of that. I think what, the last thing that we heard was um just wanted to let the public know that the board sees all of this reporting. That's the last thing we heard.
My apologies for the bad connection.
No worries. Would you like to repeat what you shared?
I will try, but signal to me if it's not working. Um oh, I, just noting the, thanking Ms. Walter Simple uh for her diligent work in the acting. Of internal audit after, you know, we did have a director who served for quite, quite very long time. Um you know, who of course was able to um assist her, her staff and, and all the roles in. Um and so that person will be starting soon. My second thing that I said was about how the. Entire board in our closed session sees all this state, data in a very timely consolidated here to the public. So I just wanted to assure everyone who, you know, what, you know, watches these reports that, that there isn't that big gap in time between our knowledge. Of what internal audit is working on and, and to the point of a report. So those are just two, two things, but mostly to extend a public thanks here to Ms. Walter Simple.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strutter. And I, I will add to that if I can, just to say that um this is of course the um. This is a um semi-annual internal report. And so um what we will begin to do is establish um a cadence for when um these reports are shared. Um in this space um for the public. Um but to Board Member Boozer Strutter's um point, the board does um see. On, seeing reporting on an ongoing basis and in a timely matter. But for the purpose of this space, we will bring them um in this way. Any other board members have any questions? If not, um I have a question. So um. The, the follow-up audits um that you mentioned, um so the special education audit. Um can you speak to, I guess, kind of what, what the ongoing audit is? Or what the follow-up audit actually will entail and what is it a follow-up from? Can you kind of speak to the, like the timeline of that? Do you have that information, Ms. Walter Simple?
Um sure, I, I have some. I can speak off the top of my head for some of the information. So in two thousand, I think twenty-three. We initially performed an audit of the um special education program. Where we were looking at. Okay, so first disclaimer, internal audit does not have the expertise. To go in depth in terms of auditing the special education program. However, the level of audit that work that we did was to ensure, okay. This student was supposed to have received and two IEPs for the period. Um did they get that info, did they get that service that they were supposed to have received? And so there are certain pro- progress reports that are required to be completed. And they're, they're all electronic. So we can go in, let's say, progress reports. This is not correct, but um or it may not be correct. Let's say quarterly progress reports or monthly progress, progress reports are required for special education students. Um so we will go in and we look to see, okay, there was one for April, one for May, one for June, one for July. And that's the level of work that we would do. Um so just on a high level to see our students receiving. The service that they should be receiving. And we did that initial audit and we found some exceptions there. And because this is a very sensitive area, we've decided that we're going to, uh and based on management's response to remedy those um. Exceptions that were identified. We went back and we selected, you know, we went back to see, did they create, let's say, they were gonna make a policy for something to fix. An issue that was identified. Then management create that policy. That's what we're gonna do in the follow-up. And um we are also doing another limited sample. Where we um. We're checking to make sure that the issues that we identified previously. Do not necessarily still exist. And if they do, we're going to report that. So the follow-up is usually making sure that management implemented as recommended. And as agreed upon in their prior action plan. And then we normally do a limited scope audit of the current activity to ensure that. Okay, it's working as outlined, the controls that is.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I have one more. But I don't wanna call the time. Okay, um so for the upcoming audits that you mentioned, the operational audits. So the capital improvement program and the COVID nineteen grants and other unaudited grants. Um I believe you said that you, you may or may not get to these um this quarter. But the others will be completed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so for the capital improvement program, I know that we had um CIP come to visit um in a few mu- a few months ago. Um where they were just talking about the program more broadly and um the timeline. Um what, I guess, just even if it's an overview, like what is the, what is the plan for, for that particular operational audit? When you do begin?
So um again, this is an area where internal audit. Our, our pool of auditors, we do not have extensive um capital improvement program um quals. Um so what we are doing, what I guess, and this is based on a previous discussion that we have had. With um some interested parties. Is that we are going to review the process. We wanted, there are certain areas, we wanna make sure that funds that are administered. Are being spent as intended. Let's say there are funds that were um allocated for a certain capital improvement pro- projects. That those funds um were, are being used efficiently. And that we're not re- returning funds to the um, to the source of those funds. Um we wanna make sure that um project managers are, you know, going out timely. They're approving those invoices and the billings for payments. Um we may look at a few awards to see how the, the competitive bidding process for those awards. To see whether um, you know, management is, you know, following the RFP process. In order to um bid these jobs. So those are some of the areas where we're gonna look at the controls that are built in. Are they effective as designed? And so based on those um controls, we're going to test the effectiveness of those um controls. To see, are they working? Um we might not be able to go and say, oh, well, this project. Be, this project is, you know, the design is right, whatever the layout, we, I mean. We don't have those types of expertise, but what we do know is that we're going to review what the process, what. That management has designed. And we're going to ensure that management is effectively discharging their responsibility as it relates to um the design processes. When we test to see how effective they are.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walter.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from board? Okay. Um well, since there is, oh, was there somebody? Nope, okay, sorry, I had, about I heard something. Well, since there is no um further discussion. Um we will move forward. Um one thing to note is that any follow-ups um from tonight's meeting um will be shared upon receipt. Um again, want to thank you so much, Ms. Walter Simple, for taking the time to come and share this information. Um with the committee and with the public. There being no further business, the time is now five fifty-seven, sorry. Six fifty-seven PM. And the March third, twenty twenty-five Board Audit Committee meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Andrew, and thank you all.
Thank you.